Good evening, thank you for joining us this evening as we call to order this 38th regular session of the Maryland City Council. I'm going to get the invocation by Councilmember Louis Metzner and the pledge of the flag if you would all please stand and join us.
We gather today here today intent on doing good work. We seek to represent fairly and well those who have given us this task. May our efforts be blessed with insight guided by understanding and wisdom. We seek to serve with respect for all. May our personal faiths give us strength to act honestly and well in all matters before us. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so quick announcements, if you have a cellphone or electronic device, please mute it. We'll be operating under the rules procedure that were adopted by this administration on December 20th, 2016. Any correspondence or distributions elected officials should be provided to the city clerk and it should include a copy for the city clerk for inclusion in the official record. The next meeting dates are May 1st and 8th, the work sessions at 4:00 PM. May 15th is the work session at 4:00 PM and then a tax rate and budget public hearing at 7:00 PM. And then, May 22nd is the regular session at 7:00 PM and there's no meeting on May 29th. We have some appointments this evening. The first appointment is the Board of Zoning Appeals of Gregory Deck. His term to expire on May 31st, 2021. Do you get a motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor, for Gregory Deck, the BZA term to expire May 31st, 2021.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five, nothing. Stormwater Advisory Committee of Paul Fry, Elmer Webley, Sean Griffith, Margaret Yuki, Mark Colsey, Keith Moore, Dan Steele, Rob Rollins, and Chris Howland.
So moved.
Second, Mr. Mayor.
Discussion.
I only wish them luck, given the fact they essentially sound like a non-elected body is going to give us some idea on how much we're going to charge people.
Anybody else, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five, nothing. Time for citizen comments. First one to sign up is Charles Burkett. Please step up to the podium and give us your name and address.
Good evening, my name's Charles Burkett and my address is 23 North Locust Street. I'm here after seeing a memo calling for changes to the city code that would allow for the city to invade the personal lives and property of private citizens and homeowners like myself. While people are living in them as well as increasing the frequency of these inspections. I can't believe that there would be any private citizen who would support the idea. I'm left shaking my head that people are so willing to allow the government to have this much power of intrusion into our personal lives. And if homeowners think that this ultimately will stop with the landlords, they are only fooling themselves. We were told a lot of things when you all initially started this program. And many of us came and expressed our concerns about the program, the inspection program. And now we are seeing that a lot of our concerns were well-founded. Have you all asked yourself why the current system isn't working? In a Facebook feed, a couple offered their thoughts, but no one offered anything that justified this type of intrusion and no one certainly offered anything that couldn't be solved through current code. One person said in not so many words that because a place has not been inspected for 10 years, a drug dealer has a long-term place of residence. I would offer if the local police are this unaware of a drug dealer that has been living in a place for 10 years, we have a much bigger problem than a unit being inspected on the interior. Someone offered that there are places that have not been inspected for 16 years. To me, I see this as a good thing. Apparently, there's not a problem, there hasn't been a problem, and the tenant certainly hasn't complained. I asked you, does the tenant, I asked you all, doesn't the tenant have the right under current code to call you or to call code and let you know that there's a problem? So that code can come in and inspect. And under those circumstances alone, I wonder why we need a mandatory three-year inspection? If a tenant can call up themselves and ask for an inspection, they could call every day if they wanted. Let me ask you all another question. I've heard a number of you all offer that there are these landlords who are avoiding the program. How do you know that? Are you estimating? Are you, these just fictitious numbers to get a personal agenda passed? How did you arrive at this non- this number of non-compliance? If these numbers are not fictitious and you know these people are who these people are, why are you not going after them under the current program? A couple of years ago, I was threatened with fines and had false accusations against me made about purposefully avoiding these inspections. After I had a couple turnovers and I honestly didn't realize they were due for inspections. This happened because I had always received a notice of when inspections were due. I was told those notices stopped and were only a courtesy anyway. Still, they took action against me. Why are they not going after these people like they went after me in the same way? Some more questions of thought I have. What are you looking for through these inspections that affect, as so many suggest, the quality of life of others downtown? What if someone has some dirty stove pans? How is this a public nuisance? What if there's a chipping paint in the window sill? How is this a public nuisance? How is anything that is unseen to the general public a public nuisance? My final question for you to consider, what's your real purpose here behind these inspections? I mean, what's your real goal? Let's have honest, public conversation here and just be real. I think I can answer this since I have heard this from a number of past and present council members. The city is on a mission to rid the city of all homeless people, poor, and landlords. Their constant beating and bullying of landlords has caused an atmosphere where all landlords have been demonized because of the actions of a few. This attitude of social elitism is just morally wrong and should stop. Although I was never in favor of the original inspection program, I believe some of these codes have made an improvement in the overall appearance of the downtown area. But, this has occurred because of the outward appearance, not based on someone's ability to clean stove pans or whether they have a broken shelf in the refrigerator. By the way, private homes are included in these outside inspections. Why not do the same inspections in private homes? I'll tell you why. Because there would be such an outrage that probably most of you would still not be sitting in those chairs in two years. I've talked to a few of you who seem to truly care about the people. Who seem to have a sincere compassion for people and the issues they deal with. This kind of oversight is not going to fix the type of problems we are experiencing in our community. Proof of this is in the fact that these inspections have been going on for 10 years and while improving the face of our town has done nothing to change the behavior of the people causing the problems. I would offer the only way to change that is to hold them personally accountable. My area alone has been cleaned up significantly over the last year, not by interior inspections. But through my persistence in calling the police and the police officers who are regularly going through the city's line and running out those causing issues and the appearance of issues. Let me finish with this. It saddens me to see and hear so many people who are ready to surrender the rights of others because of the manipulation and backdoor dealings even on a local level. When I heard the conversation between Christian and our mayor, I could not believe what I was hearing as Christian lashed at Mayor Bruegge with a statement summed up, "Bob, you can't change this." New council members were all interviewed and handpicked for how they would vote on this issue. And my thoughts so as to further this assault on landlords and the poor of Hagerstown. I'm sorry, but that's how it feels from my side of the table. Mayor and council, please reconsider this move. I would hope those of you who were handpicked would think outside of the box you've jumped in. Of course, since you were handpicked, you must already have your minds made up on these issues. I would offer there are better answers, but seeking those answers between five people and not the community is just wrong. By the way, thanks to those who responded to my concerns about the tree pits down on Locust Street. They were cleaned up and although poop has returned, at least they were cleaned up and I wish you all could come up with a better fix for that problem. Thank you.
Kay Hill, Mr. Kay Hill?
Wasn't exactly prepared for being here in this evening. Matter of fact, I tried to defer to some individuals that have more concerns in this matter, or at least more of a right to be here. From my perspective, and please indulge me if I go a little long, give me a warning. I'm one of the individuals who've come to appreciate this city from a couple of different vantage points. I've appreciated it as a bystander. I've appreciated it as a purveyor of government services. I've been where most people wouldn't go. I've done what many wouldn't do, based on allegations and assumptions. And frankly, agendas that don't take into consideration the majority of the people that are being governed. We've got a nationwide problem, not just a local problem. And with Hagerstown being the brightest and the best of all that Washington has to offer, it's time for us to come up with creative solutions. You'll notice there are no notes in front of me, nothing's prepared. I speak tonight from the heart. And I call to you who bear the burden of seeing the 1% shifted back to what it was designed to do, which was to operate for the greater good. When we continue to kick the can down the road or simply change management without the sources of our influences being re-examined, we do err. We create an atmosphere around us of us versus them. And the money that we spend to open up the process, to get input, gets looked at with a jaundiced eye. Because it's not perceived as if you genuinely care. Appointment? Election? What's your real agenda? I have walked all over this town and challenged everyone here. You speak for the town of Hagerstown, do you live here? Do you live within the city limits? If you don't, why? I have not talked to one public servant, even given a $30,000 raise, would be willing to live within our city. Now, if you're the caretakers of this city, why? Why after 40 years are we still battling the same? I'll attempt to temper my tone. I believe I have outrage. Outrage that's God-given. I believe we have time to turn things around, but not if when we have open access, the people don't believe that you're serving them but your own primary interests. And I know that's not true in many, many ways. It's just a way to appropriately approach change. I have some ideas, but it's going to take putting the old ideas behind and find out how all of us can reinvest within the city limits. Whether it's the county, or whether it's the state, or whether it's those that are headed to Annapolis. People stop here for a reason. Why did they come here initially? If we want to have more and better downtown services and we want to hire clientele of people downtown. Then what we have to do is we have to make homeownership affordable for them. And we can't sit with a thousand vacant buildings, with more vacant buildings than we have homeless people, and then blame the homeless people for the problems. Come live where we live. Come walk where we walk. Do without your car for a week. Live in the shelters for a week. Have your children stay where we stay. Because most of us are only one paycheck away or less. One domestic dispute. One sexual allegation against another. One medical misfortune. Or maybe we just get old and forget where we came from. Thank you for your indulgence.
Donnie Ravis?
Yeah, hi, Donnie Ravis. I live at 161 Brenwood Street. I am a Hagerstown resident. Yeah, I mean, I, oh, I'm also running for county commissioner, let me put that in, for this upcoming election. That was some heavy thoughts and my mind's sort of distracted here from the previous comments. Yeah, I want the county and the city, I think we need a county commissioner that lives here in Hagerstown. That's going to be right next door to the city council. That communication, that every day or once a week or at least once a month. And if that's not happening right now, I don't know if that is or not, or maybe you are, having that with some of the incumbents, that's great. That's my plan across the county. I've had success in speaking on those terms, just even saying, hey, I'd like to be here a couple of times a month. And see everybody's eyes light up and that would be great. It's not just Hagerstown, all the municipalities are running short on money. I want to work at getting the funding back that the state has taken the lion's share. And I'll work with our delegates and our senators, but also with our county, with our commissioners, and with our city council. So, without commenting on those two heavy topics, that's really all I had to say. I just wanted to say hi and introduce myself for those who didn't know me. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council.
So those are the only individuals that have signed up. If anybody else wishes to speak right now, right now's the time. Yeah, Mr. Snook?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Greg Snook, I'm president of the Industrial Foundation here in Hagerstown. I'd like to mention two topics. Last week I was sitting here in council when the discussion came up about abandoned buildings and lots that the city is looking at trying to have a solution to get rid of. And I would like to offer my assistance to maybe staff to come up with a plan, to maybe have some type of demonstration project or starting small and working to see if we can rid the city of some of those properties. So, if the staff would like to discuss that, I mentioned it to Jill earlier, and so, you know, if the council wants to move forward on something like that, we'll offer our assistance. We are eligible to, with our 501(c) status, to receive state monies through the demolition fund. And, but we also have the ability to, I guess, shorten the process, you know, for other projects. And, you know, for some of the newer members of the council, we have been partners in other projects here within the city over the last 40, 50 years. Whether it was the Hagerstown Fairgrounds, or whether it was University Plaza, or whether it was the Maryland Theater, or the downtown central parking lot. So, we want you to know that we're here to help. The second thing I'd like to mention tonight is, in some discussions with Dan from the CVB and the mayor. Our organization would also like to help with the city in reference to going forward with doing a study on the stadium that has been discussed. We recognize that this is just the first step in this process and that the board or the council members still have multiple other decisions to make once this study is done. I know there are lots of hurdles to go through this process, but we want to be part of that and we will share in the expense of doing that study. So, I thank you all very much and I look forward to working with you on multiple projects. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, taking notes. Is Steve Insbray coming, please?
Nothing additional, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor and council comments, Councilmember McIntyre, we're going to start down at your end.
I just want to make sure that I have a 20-some-year-old daughter that is kind of confused still at what she wants to be when she grows up. So, we actually talked about the possibility of police officer. It's not going to go anywhere, but there is a police recruitment event that is happening at the state police barracks on Thursday and HPD will be represented. So, just to let those know that are watching, you know, there's a lot to learn about, you know, emergency services and if you're trying to find that career, you know, that's a great place to start. And, Mr. Kay Hill, I do want to let you know that I do live in the city, I've lived here since 2001. So, just wanted to let you know that, actually, we all do, so I hope that helps a little bit, so. You're welcome. Thank you. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
I just want to address Mr. Burkett's comments a little bit. But I just wanted to make you aware and everyone aware that I met with Paul Falk earlier this week about the idea of doing a community town hall regarding these changes. So, sometime in May, hopefully after one of our meetings and hopefully somewhere not in City Hall, maybe Elgin Station again or something, we're going to do another community event like we did in January. The one we did in January was so anyone could come talk to us about anything, but this one is going to be specific to the code and landlord changes. So I hope that you will attend. And, just speaking for myself, I don't have a personal agenda. I mean, I don't know what you think any of our personal agendas are, if this is like the comments that are made on what's going on in Hagerstown, but I don't have a personal agenda. Well, I guess I do, my personal agenda is to try to help the opioid epidemic. But with that aside, I was a renter up until six months ago, I've run it my whole entire life. I take that comment personal because I feel like that only stirs the pot for people to think we sit up here on some high horse with some agenda and there's backdoor dealings going on and stuff, there's not. I mean, at least with me, I ran for office because I love my hometown and I want to see it be better. And I'm not a landlord, I'm sure you have lots of concerns and I'm always open to listen to them. I agreed to coffee with you and I'll still take you up on it. But with anyone else, you know, it's easy to complain and read one memo and go and go off on tangents about it and think it's going to turn into something that it's not. But we all have intentions to just try to help the city of Hagerstown and you made a comment about things that are unseen to the public, how are they a public nuisance? But some of these fires that have happened, some of these situations that have happened have been due to overcrowding and hoarding situations that made it difficult on our fire department to get in. And when you're inspecting units when they're vacant, you don't see those kind of things. Or when rooms are being used for bedrooms that aren't supposed to be, when they're vacant, you don't know those types of things. So, I mean, we're not the first municipality that has proposed doing annual, or in this case, every three years inspections. Actually, most of the jurisdictions in Maryland already do them every one year to two years and three years. So, it's not like we're breaking the mold here, we're just trying to figure out the best way for residents to be safe. So, I look forward to your comments when we do have a town hall, but I just, the personal agenda thing, that bothers me. I don't have one, I don't know anyone up here that has one. You know, you don't run for office to make $75 a week and get called names online all day because you feel like it, you do it because you love where you live and that's certainly why I did it, so. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Heffron?
Yeah, I'll echo a little bit of what Emily says. First of all, I would encourage everybody, if you're getting your news from what's going on in Hagerstown, dumb. There's, you know, call us, email us if you want, straight from the horse's mouth. I'll second what Emily says, I don't think anybody up here is, has any kind of personal agenda. There's a number of things that have been going on that are very troubling with rental units where people who have not subscribed to any of the rules and regulations have been renting. Where they have had residences that have been deemed unsafe and placarded and have torn the placards off and re-rented those again. And we're listening to all kinds of recommendations from staff. I don't think anybody's made any decisions yet as to what we're going to do. But we're trying to do whatever we can to support the health and safety of the renters. And that's what we're about here. Yes, every three years, maybe, you know, an invasion of privacy or something, maybe we need to talk about other ways to do it. The bottom line is, there are residences that haven't been looked at for 15 years. And to your point, that may be a good thing. That may be, that's the perfect renter and the perfect landlord and everything is copacetic and everybody's happy at the end of the day. But there's other instances where that's not the case. And we're trying to work a balance here, we're trying to do what we can to take care of people who are not going to call, yes, people can call codes all day long on their landlord and then get evicted that night. You know, it can happen, it does happen, it has happened, we've talked to people that that's happened too. So, you know, we're trying to figure out how to protect the health and safety of renters and be accommodating the landlords and everything else. It's not an easy job, it's not, there's no pat answer, I don't think anybody, if there was a silver bullet, you know, please tell us, because I'll sign up for it. But we're doing what we can to try to protect people. And that's all I have to say about that. Only thing else I want to mention is, May 1st, Washington County Gives. Go online, washingtoncountygives.org, and that's going to be an all-day session. We've got some tremendous, absolutely fantastic nonprofits in town here that are doing the work that no city, no county, no state can do. They're just doing fantastic things, but they need everybody's support, so please do what you can, if you have a business. The other businesses have stepped up to match funds, so please help.
Mr. Oshin?
Sorry, I've lost my voice a little bit, but I'd like to make a few comments, obviously, address some of the concerns that were expressed by Mr. Burkett and the proposed changes to the rental registration. The first I'll say is the statement or question that this will be increasing the frequency. It should be clear that the public understands, and I'll use Mr. Burkett's rentals that are down here off of the Franklin Street area as an example. There was information provided by staff some time ago that showed that the average length of stay for a significant number of rentals in that particular area was on average about seven months. About seven months. And you have to do rental inspection at each turnover or an inspection every seven months because of that turnover. What the city's proposing is that inspection occur every 36 months. So, this statement that increases the frequency is simply not correct for all units when you use the average stay. Or the average residency in a significant number of these places. The second statement, that the current system's simply not working and, you know, we keep hearing this, the system's not working. The system is working. If it weren't, good folks, I believe it was Ms. Ward that came in a few months back, you know, there wouldn't have been that action taken in that particular case if the system wasn't working. Our goal though, as an elected body, is to continually look at those measures that we do take and tweak them to improve how they work. Clearly, this is something that staff has brought to us, they've brought a number of suggested changes, just as they do with virtually every other law that this body is charged to apply or have applied. And we make changes, we make changes because we grow and we learn what doesn't work and what does work and we try to improve. to improve, uh, those efforts. The third thing I'll say, uh, is in regard to, you know, the comments made on Facebook feed, and I would just echo prior comments, uh, Facebook feeds, uh, they're not government. Uh, they're not even the majority opinion. Uh, if you listen to the national news, they're not even real people. Um, and so, I would just throw caution, uh, to, to, to folks that, that, uh, that buy into that, uh, to the degree that, uh, some would, uh, some would like. And the, uh, next item that I would like to address is this question of how do we come up with, uh, the notion that there are a significant number of turnovers in these places in which, um, landlords are, are renting, uh, to, to, to new individuals without inspection occurring. Uh, it's a fairly simple process, actually. Uh, the city has a water and a sewer and a light utility billing system, and so we look at the utility bills on occasion, and we say, hey, uh, looks like, uh, you know, that, that, that billing has switched four different people, uh, in, since the last time it's, uh, been rented. Uh, and therefore, we were able to compare the, the, those two scenarios and come up with a pretty simple assumption, in most cases, that it's probably changed tenants. The, uh, next item, uh, that, that I'd like to address is, uh, the notion, the received from the singular Facebook post, and it wasn't a feed, uh, uh, associated with the dialogue between the mayor and myself. It was actually just a single post by the mayor, uh, of a snippet of a meeting in which we had a discussion of the issue, in which the mayor alluded to the public, um, very frankly, uh, that I'm the guy you need to worry about. Um, to that, I'd say, yeah. Every time that an individual up here or anywhere else tries to deceive the citizens and the public, I'm the guy you gotta worry about, 'cause I'm gonna let the citizens know that that's occurring. And what I would say to that is, um, this notion that they were handpicked, uh, is a very fair assessment. Uh, I asked each candidate, sixteen or eighteen candidates that we interviewed, thirteen different questions, and there wasn't a single one of those candidates that answered the question of, do you support rental registration with a negative? Every single one of them. So, this notion that, that these folks are handpicked, uh, i, i, is a bit of a stretch, uh, when in reality, every single candidate that we interviewed answered to the affirmative of that particular question. Uh, and that's all the comments that I have.
Uh, I will tell you, uh, I do have an agenda, and my agenda is very simple. And that is, my personal agenda is to make Hagerstown the safest and most business-friendly and most robust city in Maryland. So, um, that's, that's my agenda. Always has been and always will be. Um, and I, I too, well, a, as was pointed out by Ms. McIntyre, we all live in the city, um, so, or else we can't even be sitting up here, so. But, having said that, oh, I do have one other thing, though, uh, I have to tell you, I have some lanyards over there for the film festival, which is Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, Maryland International Film Festival. Uh, you guys ought to go. It's a great time, great movies. Uh, we get movies from all over the world, uh, and it's, it's a fantastic time. So, come on downtown and enjoy it. It's all downtown this year, so. All right, moving on. Adoption of the minutes.
Mayor hereby move for the minutes. As presented from the Mayor and City Council meetings, held on mark six, thirteen, twenty-seven, all twenty-eighteen.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor hereby move that all the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five to nothing. Uh, no unfinished business under new business. Introduction of an ordinance amending Chapter E nine, donation bins to allow listening, leaning, I'm sorry, of unpaid license fees.
Mr. Mayor hereby move for the Mayor and City Council to introduce an ordinance to amend the city, code of City of Hagerstown, Chapter E nine, donation bins to allow the leaning of unpaid license fees.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five to nothing. Introduction of an ordinance amending Chapter one eighty-five nuisance abatement to enhance support to our neighborhoods.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for the Mayor and City Council to introduce an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Hagerstown, Chapter one eighty-five, nuisance abatement. Specifically, the amendments will revise the definition of nuisance as follows. Number one, add public right of way as additional area to be free of weeds, trash, debris, garbage, weed cutting, and other similar material. Two, add uncontrolled vines and overgrown shrubs and trees as conditioned to be abated on premises or within public rights of way. Number three, add leaves as a material to be abated in public rights of way. These amendments are consistent with the city's vision and commitment for housing and neighborhood, neighborhoods as the community's city center plan.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to nothing. Introduction of an ordinance, repeal of Eastern Boulevard fee district program. Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move that the Mayor and City Council introduce an ordinance to repeal the Eastern Boulevard road fee district program. Over the course of the fourteen years the program has been in effect, the city collected three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and five dollars in road fees from new development in the district to help defray the cost of the five-point-two-million road widening project in fiscal year eight and nine. Property tax revenue from the new development at this point more than covers the annual debt service for the road widening project. The Mayor and City Council have determined that continuation of the road fee program is no longer in the best interest of the citizens of Hagerstown.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five to nothing. Proof of resolution to accept the fifth amendment to the lease with the Hagerstown Baseball LLC.
Mr. Mayor hereby, oh, go ahead, Allison.
Uh, I hereby move for the approval of a resolution to amend the lease from Municipal Stadium with Hagerstown Baseball LLC to extend the term for the twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty, and twenty-twenty-one baseball seasons. The terms are essentially the same as the current lease amendments.
Second.
Discussion. Yes. So, three things I wanted to, to, to make comment on as it applies, uh, to the amendment to the lease. Uh, the first is the term, uh, as, uh, the current lease, I believe, was a two-year term. Uh, I certainly do not support a three-year term. Um, and even at the time we did the current two-year term, I, I preferred a one-year term, but at that time, it was, uh, alluded that the team has to have at least two years in order to, to, to maintain that, uh, affiliation security. So, I was fine with the two years. I would prefer this to be a two-year term, uh, given the dynamics that are occurring, uh, within all the other things we're considering, uh, currently. The second is, uh, this lease appears to represent the total cost, uh, to the city as it applies to what the, the tenant, if you will, uh, the sons, uh, are covering, uh, a, as if it, it, uh, covers the full cost for the facility to operate, and that's just not the case. Uh, I, I understand it's the thirty-five thousand, and, and then, you know, we, we work out which items that applies to, but that doesn't cover, uh, the cost, uh, the full cost for the city to, to maintain this property and, and provide it, uh, uh, free of charge, if you will, to, to the tenant. The third and most important item, uh, is, while it does provide two provisions in here, one for, uh, termination of the lease by mutual term, and second, uh, termination by transfer. In other words, the tenant gets to transfer it, uh, to an entity or buy out. Uh, there is no provision in this lease, uh, that I can find where the landlord, i.e. the city, has an outright ability, uh, to terminate the lease. Uh, and, and so, I'm just not certain how many folks out there, as a landlord, would write a lease that they wouldn't have the ability to have an out clause, uh, in it. And, um, one of the things that I think is concerning to me as it applies to that is if they transfer, they could transfer it to another entity, the thing gets the, 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 the thirty-five-thousand-dollar deal. Um, uh, I believe at least for the duration of this, uh, and, and I would just prefer to see something that does allow the city, as the landlord, uh, to be able to terminate the lease, uh, unilaterally.
Was there one in there previously?
No.
No.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries four to one. Approve of an agreement with San Mar Children's Home for installation of a mural.
Mr. Mayor hereby move to approve an agreement with San Mar Children's Home doing business as best for community folk that outlines terms and conditions for the installation of a mural on the south wall of the Marsha Run Aqueduct adjacent to West Memorial Boulevard. The city shared the project, its repairs to the concrete prior to the painting and traffic control.
Second.
Discussion.
Looks like a wonderful project, Mr. Mayor. I'd love to see more of them.
Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five to nothing. Uh, approval resolution for fiscal year two nineteen, two thousand and nineteen, community legacy application?
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move that the Mayor and City Council approve a resolution indicating approval of the city's FY two nine, two thousand and nineteen, community legacy application to the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development. The application requests a four-hundred-thousand-dollar grant to assist with the construction cost of the urban improvement project.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to nothing. Uh, approval resolution, two thousand and nineteen, strategic demolition fund application.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move that the Mayor and City Council approve a resolution indicating approval of the city's FY two thousand and nineteen strategic demolition fund application to the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development. The application requests funding to assist with two capital projects. First, a five-hundred-thousand-dollar grant for pre-construction, pre-construction costs for the urban improvement project, and two, a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant for pre-construction costs for the Dolman Black Heritage Museum.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to nothing. Approval of mutual aid agreement, Hagerstown Police Department, Washington County Sheriff's Department.
Mr. Mayor hereby move for Mayor and Council approval of a mutual aid agreement with the Washington County Sheriff's Office to provide, in cases of emergency, assistance consistent with resources, specialized units, equipment, and/or law enforcement personnel. The only potential costs to the City of Hagerstown would be personnel costs during the deployment incident.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to nothing. Approval of mutual aid agreement with the Washington County Sheriff's Department and Allegheny County.
Mr. Mayor hereby move for Mayor and Council approval of mutual aid agreement with the Washington County Sheriff's Office in Allegheny County to provide, in case of emergencies, assistance consistent with resources, specialized units, equipment, and/or law enforcement personnel. The only potential cost to the City of Hagerstown would be personnel costs during the deployment incident.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five to nothing. Approval of city, city funding support for the Maryland Theater expansion, construction administration.
Mr. Mayor hereby move for the Mayor and Council approval of a maximum of seventy-thousand dollars in city funding to support the continuation of the Maryland Theater expansion towards its construction. Administration is requested in the presentation to the Mayor and Council on three April twenty eighteen. The Maryland Theater provided an update, updated cost for its expansion project, the seventy-thousand dollars in funding will be utilized from the remaining unspent dollars previously committed on June twenty-one, twenty sixteen, maximum of five hundred thousand. The source of the city's funding will be from the approved fiscal year eighteen capital improvement budget and Project C zero eight-five-four downtown redevelopment, and the funding source will be remaining twenty-seventeen bond issued proceeds.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to nothing. Approval memorandum of understanding with the Maryland Stadium Authority and the funding support for minor league baseball stadium study.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for Mayor and Council approval of a memorandum of understanding, MOU, with the Maryland Stadium Authority and approval of a maximum of twelve thousand dollars in city funding to support a minor league baseball stadium study as requested during Mayor and Council work session on April seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen. City staff has approval to generate a purchase order for this study to be completed by the Maryland Stadium Authority and its designated consultant without securing through the city's RFP process. The focus and details of this study are, of the study are outlined separately in the attached MOU. The total cost of the study will not exceed thirty-six thousand dollars, and the cost is to be split in equal thirds between City of Hagerstown, Hagerstown, Washington County Industrial Foundation Incorporated Chief, and the Convention and Visitors Bureau, CBB. The source of the city's funding will be from the approved FY eighteen general fund contingency budget.
Second.
Discussion.
Yep. I had a couple of questions, uh, in regard to the attachment, which the MOU references as the engagement agreement. Uh, I'm assuming it means the engagement agreement dated October tenth, two thousand and seventeen. Um, and I don't recall, uh, having great familiarity with this document before, uh, this evening. Uh, maybe we talked about it at a meeting that I, uh, don't remember. But, uh, in regard to the document, uh, it specifies that, uh, this will be for a new minor league ballpark in downtown Hagerstown. And then it goes on to say on page two that, uh, that it will obtain relevant information for a maximum of three potential sites under consideration. Um, and I guess my basic question is, have, have those three sites already been selected? Um, I mean, th, this document is, is, is about, what, six or eight months old now? So, I'm just curious if those sites have already been selected, or if they're yet to be selected, or how they'll be selected. Um, and who made the predetermination that all three sites would be downtown locations? It goes on to say, under Task Three, that Populus, which is another third-party entity, will, will analyze a maximum of three potential downtown sites, locations identified by the MSA and the city. And again, I ask the question, have those sites already been identified?
I can tell you no, but...
Okay. I, I'm, I'm just curious. I've, I haven't seen this before.
Well, you saw this document last week for the first time, as so did everybody else, plus myself, on this council.
Okay.
It was attached to the MOU that was handed out last week.
So, where did it come from?
It was attached to the MO, it was attached originally.
Right, from the Stadium Authority.
From the Stadium Authority.
Right.
And on page four, it says, if I with you, overall viability to the site based on factors such as urban design and site factors. So, one of the questions that I had before we, uh, before council takes a vote this evening is, there was a statement made, I believe, last week during the discussion, that, uh, for at least one of the downtown sites, i.e. the, the downtown site back in two thousand and twelve, that, uh, that we could just move, move the cultural trail over. And so, uh, I know that I've talked to city staff. That doesn't appear to be the case, and so I'm just curious if during that analysis, if that is one of the sites that is to be considered, under site factors, will we confirm that in fact we'll lose the cultural trail as part of that analysis? I mean, I've went over, I mean, we got the board in the next room over. I've looked at it. I drove around the site twice today. Uh, clearly, uh, this is, the, that, that location in particular goes beyond the, uh, the car wash, almost up to, 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 to the back of, of the church building. Um, and so, I think, I think that, that my conversation with city staff confirms that, you know, that, that, that simply moving it over isn't, uh, isn't a viable, uh, option, and under those site factors, I'd like that to be considered. Um...
I'm pretty sure that's probably why they're doing this study, but the, the, sites would figure it out whether or not it would work or not. I mean, that's...
So, under the deliverables, it says, our deliverables and advice cannot be used or relied upon for investment or other financial decisions by the client group or by any third party. And any information we retain, we can't, uh, confirm. And any information we retain, we can't, uh, confirm as, as being accurate. Uh, so I'm just curious, uh, how that information will be gleaned, uh, and, and who will determine its accuracy, uh, if not the third party doing the study. Uh, it also says, uh, that exclusions, uh, on page five include this analysis will not include any architectural-related services, uh, including, uh, environmental assessments, noise analysis, or transportation, traffic impact analysis. So, I'd be curious at what point then, uh, that would occur, uh, in order to, to make a competent decision on whether one of these or, or any of these three sites, uh, are viable if we're not going to include within that analysis, uh, an environmental assessment, uh, uh, or, or, I guess the second most important is the transportation and traffic impact analysis. And, so, one last thing I'd like to, to, to clarify. You know, we, we heard conversation last week about how a particular site is sort of a preferred location. Uh, you know, we don't know where the other two sites are that we'll be looking at. And, uh, the statement that is repeatedly made, that we need this for the first step. Because the eighty-six thousand dollars study in two thousand twelve for that particular site, and the ten or twenty thousand dollars study in two thousand thirteen by that same consultant, Ripken, for the current and alternative stadium site and the hospital site were not approvable via MSA to be considered in, as part of the first step. Uh, and, and the reason we keep citing this, this, this notion of the first step is because, uh, it specifically states, you know, that MSA has to be the entity that sort of does this consultation. And I would only note, uh, um, uh, with clarity, that as part of the Ripken study that cost eighty-six thousand dollars for that particular site in two thousand twelve, Crossroads was a consultant that was then paid in addition as part of that study, uh, in two thousand twelve for that initial location, uh, somewhere, uh, I believe that the contract was for ten or twenty thousand dollars. And so, I don't, I don't like the fact that we're saying that this has to happen as a first step in order for MSA to accept it, because clearly we have record, at least for that particular location, that MSA was engaged, was paid, was a participant, an active paid participant on that study in two thousand twelve for that particular location, and the city did pay those invoices, uh, to do so. So, if we paid Crossroads through MSA to, to review the dynamics associated with the lease, I don't believe that the city would have done that without some concurrence from MSA that the eighty-six thousand dollar study from Ripken was an applicable, acceptable study, uh, to consider.
Anybody else?
I mean, are there answers to his questions?
I will, I, I will say that in, in two thousand twelve, I don't recall the city paying an invoice to MSA. Now, whether or not Ripken, who we paid that invoice to, used Crossroads, I, I, yeah. I, I don't know, if they did as, as an outsource of, of a portion of it. That much I can tell you. I, I don't know that, uh, I'm, I guess it's a question Rodney can answer. Uh, the study that we're doing for the multiplex, will that include traffic and, uh, environmental and all those kind of things?
Not at all.
Okay.
My understanding is that the, um, as, as it's been explained to me, that the, some of the previous activities and previous studies, um, perhaps we didn't go about it the right way. That this is, this is, uh, what's needed for a first step in order to secure potential state funding down the road. We have to get MSA involved, and this is, has been, uh, pretty much directed by them as the first step that we have to follow to get on that path, so.
I, I just have a hard time hearing that and knowing that Crossroads through MSA was paid by the city as part of an eighty-six thousand dollar study that the city did.
But I don't know that, Chris. Do you have that invoice that says Crossroads?
Yeah, I'll bring it, I'll bring it next week.
Paid by MSA?
Your hand is on the cover letter of that, uh, document. I'll be happy to bring that next week.
So, so, so we paid MSA, who in turn paid Crossroads in two thousand twelve?
To review the lease terms, that's correct.
Oh, the lease, okay, the lease.
That's right.
Okay, all right, yeah. Okay, I agree. He's right.
Why would Crossroads not engage with lease terms if MSA wasn't okay with the study?
Trying to get together for, for the old plan in two thousand twelve. Had nothing to do with site plan or anything. Or study. Anybody else?
Yes, I got one last thing. If you're going, if you're gonna head down this road, I would only ask that you consider concept B from the two thousand thirteen Ripken report, addendum to the original study, as one of those three possibly viable locations.
Thank you.
Who's going to decide the locations?
We, apparently, the, 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 the way this is supposed to work, is that the MSA, uh, who apparently has contracted through Crossroads.
In October.
Will come back and tell us three locations and the, the economic benefit of each of those locations as it's seen through their analysis. And it'll be incumbent upon us whether we want to take a next step, which would be to, uh, put together some kind of a plan that consists of, okay, how do we accomplish any of these sites, period? But, again, without this, there's no next step, so it doesn't matter.
So.
It tells it clear here, MSA and the city will pick the locations.
Okay, but we're the city, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
You're right.
I, I guess I just, I, this letter's dated October tenth, two thousand seventeen, but this was just brought to us a month ago. So, I'm confused as to who is already, who was planning this? And is that who's going to continue planning this, or what happens after we say yes to this? Like, if this, this has already been in the works since October?
I'm gonna tell you, I saw that letter last week, for the first time that you saw that letter.
So, Susan Seeger at Crossroads Consulting just decided herself that she was gonna do it? I mean, that doesn't make sense.
You did you recall that the CBB, Dan, go ahead. Did the CBB actually, you gotta step up the microphone if you want to speak, but the CBB actually approached the city to participate in putting together a first step for a new minor league baseball facility, which I then brought to the council, and this is where we're at today. Go ahead, Dan.
All right, last June, uh, delegate Wilson and I started a series of meetings with the stadium authority to see how we could get an effort, uh, reestablished, and they prescribed a route we're taking. They said that you have to submit this project initiation letter. And I, so, I said, after we submit the letter, then what? They said, then we'll, we have to, uh, contract with someone to do a study. I said, well, what does that look like? And they said, well, that depends on how broad you want it to be. So, we provided all the studies you've been talking about that we did in the past, and we said we'd prefer to, to, uh, short-circuit that, update these studies, and move on with the site selection. And, and they said, that's acceptable. And then I asked them, what would that look like? So, they, uh, they asked Populus to quote it, and they sent it to me. And then I knew the cost, I knew the procedure, and I knew how much money that I had to attempt to raise to make it easy to happen. And then when I was confident enough that I could get two-thirds of it, I came to the city with it. So, it's dated in October, because when they sent it to you a couple of months ago or a couple of weeks ago, they used the exact same document they sent to me. They didn't change that, and, uh, that's why it's dated in October.
We actually got the MOU the Friday before last Tuesday, so. Was the first time that I saw the MOU or the document for Crossroads.
Right, I did not want to come here and raise more questions than I answered. I wanted to get two or three steps down the line, so I could tell you what to expect next. And they offered to put Populus on the quote, which I had no objection to, that didn't cost anything.
So, you remember your presentation? Uh, you asked various council members to attend the presentation that you gave, uh, about two years ago now, roughly. And, and one of the things that I recall saying very clearly during that was there's two things that appear to continually and repeatedly turn the public off and turn the citizens, uh, off, uh, for this particular project. One, it's predetermined location, uh, not allowing a, a, an unbiased sort of selection process to ferret that out. Uh, and two, uh, not, uh, being deliberately transparent through the process. And, it's just one council member would say that it appears those two items are the two items that I feel are, 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 are transgressed once again. And, and I, I, I have difficulty, you know, reconciling that, uh, frankly, as, as just an average citizen.
Anybody else?
I'll just say that I'm gonna vote yes on this because I believe in the Hagerstown Suns, and I believe that they're an asset to our community, and I hope that this happens. But the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again with different results. So, you have to understand why the public is turned off by this. This is my first go-around with the stadium. It's my first time involved with this, and I hope that we make it happen. And I believe in your vision, and when you speak, I, I, I hear it and I see it, and I know there are other people that want it to happen too. So, because I think the Suns are an asset to Hagerstown and we should keep them here, I, I will agree to this, but I hope, as I said last week over and over and over again, that we seriously work on step two and step three and step four of after this study, instead of getting the study, getting the results, and.
Stopping.
Be having the same conversation four years from now.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay, motion carries three to two, we're adjourned, thank you very much.